That matters under consideration and that can be emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and the committee and refrain from any booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. So anyway, now we'll move to the main parts of the meeting. Emma, well, first of all, the minutes of the last meeting on 9 September, can we confirm that, please? Apologies for absence, Emma.
Chairman, we have apologies from councillor Stephen Mullin.
Disclosure of interests?
No, I'm right at the meeting.
I would like to add one, please. I'm a member of the Hazemere Society who have written in about one of the planning applications. Non pecuniary.
Questions, members of the public, Emma?
I would just like to admit a non pecuniary interest in 10.57. My house is physically not far from the site, but it's not connected in any way or there are no aspects that affect my house or this other house, but physically they are not far away.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, non pecuniary, Hazemere Society for, to the Long Dean House and the Georgian, as they've written on both, but I've taken no part in those discussions with them whatsoever.
Catherine Keane? Thanks, Chairman. Same, I'm a member of the Hazemere Society, but I've had no conversations with Long Dean House.
Right, perhaps we'll move on. Questions, my members of the public?
No, number six.
And members, Emma?
Number six, Chair.
Are there any, Beth, are there any changes to, updates to government legislation that we should be aware of?
No, Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Right, now, before we, I would like to just everybody to introduce themselves. I'm David Beeman, I'm the Chair of the Committee, I represent a Farnham Ward.
And I'm John Robiney, I represent Shottam, Melanchurian, Hazemere.
Zach Elwood, I'm the Head of Planning and Economic Development here at Waverley Borough Council.
Emma Dersley, Committee Secretary.
Good evening, members, I'm Lewis Jones, Planning Solicitor.
Good evening, members, I'm Beth Howland-Smith, Development Manager.
Good evening, members, I'm Dan Holmes, Planning Officer.
Good evening, members, I'm Chris French, Area Team Leader.
Good evening, members, Pat Agarthas, Planning Officer.
Good evening, members, Olivia Goram, Planning Officer.
Thank you very much. There were some site inspections, although all three sites actually, which we took note of last week, so most of us have been to see the sites. So can we now move on to the main items on the agenda, with this item being, which is a Surrey Public Speaking course, WA 2019 1057, Loneside 41 Petworth Road, Hazemere, the proposal erection of a retaining wall following demolition of the existing retaining wall to provide five car parking spaces. And can I ask Officer Daniel Holmes to present?
Thank you, Chairman, good evening, members. This application is for WA 2019 1057 and seeks planning permission for the erection of a retaining wall following demolition of the existing retaining wall to provide five car parking spaces. The application has been brought before the area committee at the request of a ward member for further consideration of the practicality of the use of the spaces. This slide shows the location plan. Loneside is a large detached residential building occupied by five independent flats. No parking is currently provided for these flats. This shows the location of the site. Here you can see Loneside, the application site, Petworth Road and its relationship to the surrounding properties. The proposed site plan shows the position of the retaining wall proposed and indicates the groundwork required to remove the bank to the north-west and to the north-east of the plot. The bins would stay where they currently are. The site photographs show, photograph A, the principal elevation of the application site looking south-west. This is indicated on the bank to be removed. Photograph B shows the principal elevation of the application site looking south-east. Photograph C shows the existing section of hedging and bank to be removed from the north-east of the plot. This will be pushed back by two metres. A condition has been recommended to replace the lost section of hedging. Photograph D looks east along Petworth Road. Granite sets would be positioned here to clearly define the footpath on the pavement and distinguish it from the parking area. And finally, photograph E shows the parking bay approved at Collards, 120 metres north-west of the application site. Similar materials would be used for the proposed parking bay. The proposed section slide shows the proposed section plan and indicates the width of the curb proposed to be dropped. The dropped curb would comprise of two sections. The section to the north-east would be 21.3 metres long and the section to the north-west would be 10.6 metres long. These would be broken up by a 5.5 metre section of raised curb. These are the proposed elevations. This illustrates the length of the section of hedging to be replaced. And finally, the proposed visibility, viability, sorry, the proposed viability play. Surrey Highways have reviewed the proposed visibility displays and commented that this would be acceptable in highway safety terms. The improvement to the visibility play that the proposed scheme would achieve would make reversing into the highway safer to carry out. In assessing this application, the officer took into consideration the similar lay-by style, the parallel parking scheme that had been implemented at Collards, a short distance away from Loneside, without any recorded highway safety incidents. Officers have given consideration to the proposal and consider that the proposed erection of a retaining wall to provide five parking spaces would be acceptable for the reasons set out in the officer report and mentioned above. Officers considered the main matters for consideration by members to be: the design and impact on visual amenity. Whilst the changes would be visible from the street scene, the materials would match the existing wall and would be similar to the parking bay located at Collards. Officers note that the hedge road to be removed is not protected and could be removed without planning permission. However, condition seven requires a landscaping scheme for the replacement of tree planting on the site, including the retention of landscape features. This would mitigate any harmful impact on visual amenity. And secondly, the impact on parking and highways. The County Highways Officer has visited the site and assessed the application on safety, capacity and policy grounds and have responded to a number of questions officers have raised with them. The proposed scheme would allow vehicles to be parked clear of the highway, keeping the footway unobstructed for pedestrians. The proposed retaining wall would be considered acceptable with regards to visual amenity and would not harm residential amenity. Furthermore, the County Highway Authority have reviewed the proposal on safety grounds and are raising no objection. The proposal would provide enhanced parking for the flats and therefore the application is recommended for approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. We have one public speaker on this, Jesse Chapman, would you like to come forward, please? You have four minutes when you start speaking. After 30 seconds ago you had a little beep, so you know when he's coming to end. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members of the committee, for allowing me to speak in favour of the proposal this evening. I am pleased that your officers have recommended the application for approval. In making the recommendation, officers have identified that proposal is acceptable and fully compliant with the requirements of the council's planning policies. I do note the comments that have come in from some neighbours in the town council. However, the recommendation from officers to approve the application, this application represents a logical form of development to address an issue which I have heard members of this planning committee discuss at length many times before, in that parking in Hazemere is an issue. Here, a solution has been put forward which satisfies the requirements of the development plan and is also one which is supported by Surrey County Council. As such, I cannot see how an objection can be maintained when it achieves so much of what the council, both Waverley and Hazemere Town Council, seek from all development. Accordingly, I believe that it is only logical to grant planning permission. That's about all I have to say on this, really. It seems that it's quite a straightforward proposal that's been put forward, which addresses an issue which I've heard discussed many, many times before at this committee. So thank you for your consideration, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Chapman. Councillors, your turn. Councillor Dear.
Thank you, Chairman. This building's been converted into five or six, I'm not quite sure which, looking at the planning records, dwellings, which as far as I can see are rented out for fairly short periods. There's no parking at the building, so the lessies park on the pavement. There's some doubt as to whether or not this is illegal, but either way, it's a mess. However, this proposal will convert over 100 feet of largely green street scene at the eastern entrance to Hazemere into a long strip of car parking, a long strip of tin. The officer's report says this won't have an adverse effect on the visual amenity of the area. This is clearly wrong. Of course it does. Situations where householders have enlarged driveway accesses and dugout banks nearby have been refused, and this is far more dramatic a proposal than those were. All cars will have to park facing east or the driver won't be able to get out of the car, meaning that access and egress to the spaces across the pavement, of course, will be very tricky, no matter what Surrey County Council say, in my view. The drop section of curb would give no protection to the pedestrians from the traffic that trundles along Petworth Road, some of which are very large trucks, as we saw from our site visit the other day. I think the biggest argument against this is that there's nothing to stop further pavement parking, there's nothing to stop the proposed spaces being used and then residents or visitors to the building doubling up on the pavement all over again. I think this application should be refused and either parking enforcement action taken or bollards erected to stop the danger that exists at the moment, or I fully appreciate those latter points are not discussable here. So as I say, my view is that this application should be refused and arguably intensifies the problem of parking that exists at the moment. Thank you.
Councillor Nicholson.
Thank you, Chairman. I very much agree with the comments made by councillor Dear here. Petworth Road is a most attractive road, it's a narrow winding rural road, it's one of the most attractive roads in Hazemere. The buildings, you start with Victorian buildings moving through to mid-war year buildings, and it's marked by mature hedge roads close to the road with irregular trees. And essentially, what we are producing here is a scar on the road which would produce an in-series small car park, so I would not support this.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could ask the officer to sharp the slide, I've got it labelled in Plan C8, Proposed Visibility Play. Oh, you just come past it. Can I have the one before that, sorry? That's the one there. In our little sketches we've got here, it wasn't quite so clear. In that car on the left, there are two, one of those or two of those look like gates because they seem to have handles on them. Is that? Can you explain what those two are? Right, you've got the car on the left-hand side.
I think that's just the height of the wall. Yeah, I think it's a measurement.
No, oh, well, across, there's two black, look like handles.
Yeah, I think that's the measurement. I think that might be, we'll have a look, I think that's a number.
In the middle of the wall, that's a number. Because obviously we had the hedges and everything there, but you couldn't see if there was anything there.
The councillor, will you speak? Oh, yes, I'll take councillor Adams first.
Thank you. Well, I can see that this would help the residents there by encouraging or providing more parking spaces immediately outside the property. I trust that somebody has actually checked the foundations of the house when it's proposed to move back the wall. I'm not sure that, you know, you're reducing the amount of capacity for water to build at the back of that wall, and obviously that's a potential risk to the foundation to that house. As far as the hedge is concerned, well, it's not a hedge, is it? It's just a piece of wild growth. I can't see that if it was a neatly maintained hedge, you would have some point about it, but in fact it just expands over and shortly will be expanding over the road. So I don't see that there's any real reason why that should be retained, especially if new plants are going to replace it a bit further back. So I don't see any reason to object to the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Knowles?
Thank you very much, Chairman. I wondered when the photograph that appeared with one vehicle was taken. Living in the town myself, nearly all was four and certainly on the time of our site visit there were four, and we saw quite heavy vehicles manoeuvring out to the middle of the road because as they approached, those vehicles were actually overlapping the footpath and onto the road. So there were a number of issues to be taken into account that others have spoken of, but there is clearly a safety issue, whether the vehicle should be there or not. I think the vice-chairman and I were quite surprised when someone said at the site visit the police said it wasn't an offence. Clearly, it is an offence to drive on the footpath, but that's a matter for elsewhere. There are safety issues to concern, to consider, and as councillor Adams has said, the current trees or scrub there aren't particularly attractive, so I think that has to be taken into account. Thank you.
Councillor, will you?
Thank you, Chairman. And does our officer to look at the Collards photograph, please? There isn't a pavement at Collards there, is there? Therefore, it is a different setup. I find this almost a half-baked scheme in that originally they said we'll remove the wall and replace it with roadway sleepers. I think, first of all, a structural engineer would have laughed that one out of court. Obviously, something rather more serious in the way of a structure is required. But the street scene is hardly off-street and there is a large wall there. The visual amenity of that part of Petworth Road really deserves to be retained. I'm sorry, I just find the comparison with Collards not to be very accurate. Thank you.
Catherine Keane?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, on a previous plan that we saw, we saw up to five cars parked one behind the other on this new layout. And that concerns me because then you would have cars parked reversing over a pavement onto what is quite a fast road. Although Petworth Road is supposed to be a 30, it does not happen. Cars speed along there at a very fast rate. So I'm concerned about safety of other drivers on the road and I am concerned that Surrey Highways aren't concerned about this as well. So I am quite concerned about the whole thing. Thank you.
Yes, councillor Davidson?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm somewhat inclined to agree with councillors Dear, Asher Wood and Nicholson. It does destroy the approach road into Hazemere and changes the visual amenity which we have for visitors to our town. I also would like just to make an observation that it's up to people who are splitting up dwellings to take into account the subsequent parking arrangements for their residents, and I don't believe that this was actually taken into account when the building was broken up. But that's another issue, I guess, altogether. I'm inclined to support the view that this should be rejected.
Councillor Dear?
Thank you, Chairman. Just so I'd point out, I agree with my colleagues about the greenery, the existing greenery, the hedges. I mean, there's no intrinsic value there as far as I'm concerned and I, you know, that's not the element that I find objectionable. The element that I find objectionable is the conversion of an attractive green street scene into a strip of parking and, as I say, the fact that there is nothing in this proposal that would stop this intensifying the problem by preventing cars continuing to park on the pavement in addition to the spaces that are being created.
The councillor, will you speak? I would point out, of course, the officers have been to Surrey Highways on several occasions on safety issues and I have to say that Surrey County councillor Adam and Dan, this would be safe, but therefore, if this, if any of the committee was minded to reject this, it would have to not be on highway grounds, I would have to say. But anyway, okay, shall we move to the vote then? The recommendation is that Surrey conditions 1 to 7 and informants 1 to 8, permission be granted. Those in favour, we'll use electronic voting, please, so if you're in favour, best, you know, yes plus and against, no. All flashing, Emma?
They're all flashing the same colour.
All flashing the same colour? They're all blue.
I think we go back to the hands.
Really? It's not very satisfactory, is it? Can we just try again with electronic voting, please? Okay then, fine.
I think we go back to the hands or something like that.
No, can we just try the voting again, please? Those in favour?
Are we doing hand?
Well, I'll try the electronic first. Can we do electronic? I mean, it's got to work.
Yeah, sorry, if we can do it by hand.
Yeah, I'm not very happy about that. Those in favour, please, put their hands up, please.
One, two, three, four, five.
Against?
One, two, three, four, five, so it's your card.
Okay, well, I asked to go with what I voted in the first place, which is to accept it, yes? So which is granted?
Good evening, members. The application before you today is the planning element of the application, which also consists of a listed building application which will be considered by under delegated powers. So the application, as some of you know, is for the erection of two additional dwellings to the northern part of the site, the extension and change of use of the rear element of the hotel use to 16 flats, the demolition of a linked building between the existing historic element of the hotel and the rear addition, and will include the retention of 12 bedrooms to the front element of the hotel, the reorganisation of the restaurant and the bar area on the ground floor, and some elements of change to the high street front, including a new doorway. There'd be provision of ancillary parking to the rear of the site and associated landscaping. In terms of the location, the site itself is on the High Street at the centre of Hazemere. It's a much-loved and readily identified building and to the rear of it, there is a car park element as well, which is a public car park which has a pedestrian route that runs through the element of the car park and onto the High Street. So just moving forward, so again, so the site plan, can you see behind me? Oh, that one. So this is the area photograph which we've talked of before. So with the blue dot, that's the listed building element which extends north. To the side of that is also Tudor Cottage, which is also a listed building. And to the rear, that's the public car park and there is residential behind that and commercial and a variety of uses on the High Street. This is the High Street elevation on the top photograph. You'll see the listed building elements, it's very much of the Surrey style, and to the rear of it, you'll see the linked element which links into the adjacent hotel building which has a sort of swimming pool and spa element on the ground floor. And that's the car park as well. So again, this gives you a sense of the condition of that building and its location, which is also within the conservation, the Hazemere Conservation Area. So this is the northern section of the site, sorry, I should say two cottages, not three. And the building beyond it, in this element, this is Tudor Cottage, and that is the access to that particular dwelling. On this element of the site will be, is proposed the development of two cottages. And again, this bottom view, as I think some of the members saw when we were on site, this is a view from the council's car park, looking across the site, this element of the site, the northern element of the site, which, again, officers have had to consider the impact of conservation, of those developed, that proposed unit on the conservation area. In terms of the proposed block plan, the listed building, the hotel building will stay more or less as is. The connecting element into the rear element of the hotel building will be removed. The hotel building will have its own terrace to the rear. This block will be converted to 16 residential units, again, with car parking within that area. This is the retained Holm Oak tree that we saw, and a number of trees on the edge will be retained as well, and the car parking on this element which will serve the residential. And these are the two cottages to the rear on the northern part of that site. In terms of the main hotel, I mean, the listed building, the works to the listed building are predominantly structural and internal, the external works to that are somewhat limited. But it will include the removal of that external link as described. That's it again. Again, this is the rear extension building, those are existing and proposed. In terms of the bulk and structure of that, it's probably better seen in this particular image. There will be a series of balconies on that building as well. So going on to the new cottages, so again, when we considered the previous application at committee, one of the key elements of this was that there are three new style houses on this section of the site. Those buildings in themselves were considered to be too overbearing, both in terms of the site and to the neighbours' properties, and these cottages have been designed with traditional elements but in a more modern aesthetic, with the key windows looking internally rather than over the elevation of the adjoining building. So the key determining issues which are set out in the body of the report, I don't propose to go through all of these, I would be here a long time. I think the key ones, I think what we'll do is, if you don't mind, is to go through I think what we'll do is, if you don't mind, is to go through the determining issues for the previous application and go through the reason for refusal that were set out before, and I think that's a good starting point to see how this scheme has overcome those reasons for refusal. Previously, the first reason for refusal was that it was unacceptable loss of the hotel use within the town centre, which was considered contrary to retain policy LT2. At that time, the viability assessment report was submitted by Florretts, which looked at the assessment of how viable the hotel use was on the site at that time, and is considered relevant today. That report concluded that the proposed redevelopment, which would bring forward a 12-bedroom hotel unit on the site, had more viability in terms of the sustainability of that use within the town centre, and the conclusions within that were accepted by Adams and Tegger, who undertook an independent assessment of it. Savills' marketing report in October of 2019 confirmed that the hotel had been placed on the market for a four-month period. A red book valuation had been undertaken and determined that the market value of the hotel that was submitted with the marketing materials was 3.75 million. Six offers were received from a variety of pub users and one hotel operator ranging from 1.7 million to 3 million for all, or just the front section of the site. All of the offers were considered not to meet the guide price and therefore were rejected. Waverley's estate service asset manager reviewed the marketing report and the findings, which included the red book valuation, concluded that they were considered acceptable. So, in terms of how did the proposals meet the criteria of policy LT2, officers felt that the information submitted with the application was sufficient and robust in its nature to justify moving away from the desire to retain all of the hotel beds within the town centre for reasons relating to the longer term viability of the site and no alternative user coming forward at this time. The second reason for refusal was unacceptable harm to the designated heritage assets. The primary consideration at the time of consideration at the last committee was in relation not to the listed hotel building but primarily to the setting of Tudor Cottage and the impact that this would have in terms of being over dominant and overlooking to the Tudor Cottage garden. Significant weight was given to substantial harm issues, and the council's historic building officer has reviewed the amended cottage design, which turns the windows away from the building. So, in terms of the MPPF, this also makes provision that if substantial harm does arise, that weight against the public benefits should be assessed, and in this particular instance, because the less substantial harm that does arise is purely to setting, public benefits arising were considered to outweigh this harm, and the benefits included investment into the listed building, i.e. the hotel, the removal of the link, which is considered an insensitive element, the hotel and restaurant use being secured, which in itself would have community benefits, and new residential use provided on the site, and including landscape and investment onto the site and the car parking areas, which in themselves would be improved. So, in terms of reason for refusal, three, the unacceptable harm to residential amenity, so the redesign of the new cottages into two distinct cottages prevented the overlooking to Tudor Cottage on ground and first floor, there would be no impact on daylight and sunlight arising, so in essence, no harm will arise from the proposed development to Tudor Cottage or the adjoining premises. So, it's considered that the reason for refusal, three, was also overcome. Also, reason four was the unacceptable loss of trees on the site. I'll raise the issue on the update sheet. So, concern was raised in relation to the loss of the trees and the ability of the landscape framework to provide suitable replacement species within it. There is amendments to the current application with the retention of the cherry trees on the northern element of the car park parking area within the two cottages, which was seen as a specific benefit in terms of softening that particular edge, and overall, the landscape quality was seen to be of sufficient nature to help compensate in part for the loss of those trees, and wearing this, officers concluded that this reason for refusal was also overcome in part. So, just in terms of the update sheet, a number of additional comments have been received since the officer's report was concluded. Ten representations in support of the application have been received. These focused primarily on grounds which have already been raised, i.e. benefits arising from the investment in the hotel use and the retention of the 12 units. One neighbour has raised a number of objections, they have already submitted an objection, but sticking to the key planning reasons of the additional ones, they kindly pointed out that 10 trees, as stated in the officer's report, 10 trees want to be removed, but there are actually 21, it's actually 10 groupings of trees, and I'm sorry for any confusion that that has caused. Issues in relation to foul and surface drainage were also received, and that the recent revision, revision D, had not been properly considered or subject to a 21-day consultation period. Officers were of the opinion that the technical nature of the document and the conditions were sufficient to cover these issues, and that the key issue that we would be assessing was the drainage strategy sufficient to deal with, had sufficient capacity to deal with mitigation required, and we felt that it did, and the Lee Local Flood Authority commented on it and raised no objections subject to the application of that condition. And the comments raised included that we hadn't taken into consideration properly the appeal decision on the site, and that the impacts on the conservation area were such that the findings of that appeal decision were still outstanding. That was considered in some detail within the officer's report, and we are mindful of that, have been mindful of that, and also the historic building adviser has been mindful of that as well, so we do believe that that has been taken into consideration in the planning balance, overview of the application. So, no other additions to that. Thank you, chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. We have two public speakers on this, first one being Mr. Alastair Morgan, an objector. Please come to the front, please, Mr. Morgan. You have the wonderful time of four minutes.
Good evening. I'm the owner of Tudor Cottage, a Grade II designated heritage asset located next door to the hotel. This is a complex application. The planning officers have proposed 32 conditions. I understand that your role is to review the application in the context of planning, law and policies, and not to opine on whether it will secure a safe future for the hotel. Firstly, the application does not meet the requirements of policy LT2. A very short, four-month marketing exercise was conducted by Savills, who also prepared the red book valuation, and was subject to a conflict of interest contrary to the RICs ethical standards. On the length of October, I asked the council for a copy of the valuation and other submitted documents. On Friday of last week, the council refused my request, thinking they could rely on the exemption in the environmental information regulations. However, those regulations stipulated that a refusal must be issued within 20 days of the request, the deadline for which passed in November, a point that was even overlooked by your own chief executive, who only offered me a personal apology late last night. The council has not handled my request in accordance with the law, severely prejudicing my position. This constitute grounds for me to instigate a judicial review and to refer the council's breach of the law to the Information Commissioner's office. The Hazelmere Society, strongly objecting to the application, note that Savills received several bids that are indicative of hoteliers' interest in buying the hotel, but at a lower level than the applicant's high asking price. They engaged an independent hotel property consultant to review the campaign and concluded it failed to prove the hotel is not viable. The society notes that the loss of 31 bedrooms will be detrimental to Hazelmere and flies in the face of borough and county initiatives to expand tourism, which is especially appropriate to this gateway turn to the new national park. Secondly, the application will result in unacceptable harm to the setting of designated heritage assets, including my property. The applicant has misrepresented the consultations they had with me in respect of the two new houses, which contrary to the report are bigger in both height and mass than those refused at appeal in 99. Please also note that since then, a material change has occurred. My property is now a private dwelling, which gives rise to additional planning considerations and constraints. The openness of the car park, which was noted by the planning inspectorate in 99 and by this committee last year, as making a significant contribution to the setting of listed buildings in the conservation area, will be lost forever. Thirdly, the application will result in unacceptable harm to my residential amenity. The case officer has incorrectly assessed my property on page 45 of the report, probably due to the fact that the council's planning, historic buildings and tree officers did not accept my invitation to visit my property to assess the impact on my residential amenity and my trees. This is grossly negligent and procedurally unfair. Fourthly, the application will result in the unacceptable loss of 21 trees. The council's tree and landscape officer is unable to support the form of the proposed development. Both Waverley Borough and Hazelmere Town Councils have, since the previous application, declared climate change emergencies. If this application is approved, the committee will send a very clear message to the community that planning and council policies and the law in relation to the environment and climate change are simply irrelevant in the context of determining planning applications. And finally, the drainage scheme. The installation of a huge tank and its membrane in the car park will be within the root protection zones of four of my trees that are subject to statutory protection. The planning officers have failed to pick up on this and have misrepresented communications with me on this matter. The damage to my trees will result in them being lost. I am simply astonished the planning officers deem this to be acceptable. No assessment has been made of the impact of the scheme discharging water onto my property. The detrimental impact of the drainage scheme on my residential amenity is clear, and it fails to address numerous statutory constraints and planning policies. Mr. Chairman, the council has acted in breach of the law in its handling of the application. Your chief executive's last minute apology is simply not good enough. Securing the hotel's future should not be at the expense of planning, heritage, environmental and legal principles and constraints the application and the planning officers have failed to address.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morgan. I shall ask the officers to respond to some of those points after we've heard the other speakers. Mr. Angel. Mr. Angel.
Councillors, this is the second occasion on which we have had case officers' recommendation for approval at committee. In the intervening period, the UK High Street is now in a full-blown crisis. The Office for National Statistics last week confirmed that 2019 was officially the worst year on record for UK high streets. Hazelmere is witnessing this effect. The High Street and West Street alone have 20 retail units currently sitting vacant, all having closed in the last 18 months. Hotels are similarly affected. The rise of Airbnb in the UK has been exponential. There are a quarter of a million listings on the website in the UK alone, meaning that Airbnb listings are equal to almost 40% of the entire UK hotel bedroom count. In order for high streets and hotels to stay relevant, innovation must be supported and encouraged. Our vision will bring not only much-needed homes to Hazelmere's town centre, it will create a destination venue for tourists and locals alike. Our plans won't be the only solution to reviving Hazelmere's High Street, but they will be a significant improvement, creating a community hub and a fantastic range of spaces which will support retail activity on the High Street. The revitalised hotel will be inclusive to all, offering a special and friendly atmosphere that everyone can enjoy and will attract tourists from further afield to enjoy Hazelmere as a gateway to the South Downs. Following the previous planning refusal, we have met on a number of occasions with councillors and case officers to address the reasons. In particular, we agreed to market the hotel at the globally recognised professional red book valuation for three months in order to satisfy the LT2 planning policy to give the planning committee the necessary confidence for a change of use. We have not only satisfied but exceeded our obligation in this regard. We agreed to redesign the three muse houses into two individual cottages, lowering the height, scale and mass, and changing their orientation to ensure there was no overlooking in the neighbouring residential back garden at Tudor Cottage, and this has been achieved. Our architect met on a number of occasions with our neighbours, Mr. and Mrs. Morgan, to listen to their concerns to try and find an acceptable resolution. With the redesign of the cottages, we were able to retain more trees in the rear grounds, promoting biodiversity and preserving the character of the conservation area. In addition, we propose a highly sustainable and eco-friendly passive house approach to a low-carbon environmental design, creating new, highly sustainable residential homes right in the heart of our community. Your own local plan has allocated the site for residential units. It makes sustainable, efficient use of underutilised brownfield land in the town centre and contributes to meeting your housing requirements away from the most sensitive green areas of the borough. Councillors, this evening you have an opportunity to both protect and transform the Georgian Hotel that is a historical asset at the heart of our community, to create a new, busy, thriving community hub for all locals and visitors to our town, and to create sustainable homes away from our green and open spaces. We have addressed every reasonable way the concerns put forward previously. As a council, the local community desperately needs to see that you do support and encourage sustainable, thoughtful change, and that you recognise such change is needed to give our High Street a fighting chance to stay relevant. Of course, such change will never please everyone, but now is the time to look forwards, not backwards, and listen to the quiet majority, not the noisy few. Your decision tonight is not just about the Georgian, it is about how we, as a community, can act to help all independent retailers and secure future trade from a cross-section of consumers. We implore you to follow your case officer's recommendation and support this application.
Thank you very much. Now, before I want to, councillor, certain statements, Mr. Morgan, does any officer wish to comment on those?
Thank you, chair. In relation to the impact on the trees and the flood zone geocellular tank, I've had, the tree officer has looked at the plan and looked at the tree roots protection zone that was identified on the plan, and that came from the plan that was within the tree report submitted by the applicant, and the tree officer is satisfied that the tree roots would be sufficiently protected in order to protect those established trees, so we have no further comment on that, and that has been relayed to the neighbour. In terms of the appeal decision of 1999, obviously, historic building guidance has moved on since that period, and the historic buildings adviser has assessed the impact of the two amended design, the design of the cottages, and is satisfied that the amended design is such that it won't have a detrimental impact on the conservation area, albeit that there was an identified harm to the setting of the listed building, but as the report sets out, we are satisfied that the public benefit arising will overcome that particular consideration, so those factors have been taken into account. In terms of the impact on the amenity, as we pointed out, we are satisfied that the redesign of the two cottages are such that issues in relation to overlooking, loss of daylight and being overbearing, which are the primary considerations in relation to amenity, won't result from the proposed development. In relation to the financial viability, we are satisfied that sufficient information has been provided on the public website that indicates both the methodology that the assessments have been undertaken and the values that have been undertaken were identified as well, so we believe that sufficient information has been provided, that would not prejudice the applicant and their ability to protect some level of privacy, have been provided on the public website, and that has been relayed to the neighbour as well.
Thank you very much.
Just on a non-planning matter, obviously, members will have heard, Mr. Just on a non-planning matter, obviously members will have heard Mr Morgan's frustration that there was a delayed response to his request under the Environmental Information Regulations. We acknowledge that there was a delay in responding, but I just wanted to make the point that Mr Morgan has been referred on to the Information Commissioner's Office, which is the correct stage to go to, should he be unhappy with the response that he's received, and it's not a material planning consideration for you tonight. That was the only point I was going to make.
Thank you, Mr Wood. Right, councillors, yes, councillor Knowles.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I've listened very carefully to everything that's been said, and I think Mr Morgan made some very good points, and I have to say I have serious concerns regarding the application and the report, which raises a number of issues that it states should be taken into account, but then officers believe them to be minimal. But when you add all these minimals together, they are no longer minimal. And let's have a look at some of them. The report says minor harm to heritage assets, where there is a presumption against planning permission, but the harm is only minor, so we can ignore that on this occasion. Loss of trees weighted into planning balance, conditions would help mitigate the impact, officers claim. The experienced members of this committee know conditions aren't worth the paper they're written on. They're either not informed or come back later to be overturned. We've heard reference to this large tank to be installed in the car park, where we saw on the site visit, that seemed to be very close to the grounds of Tudor Cottage and the wall. Officers at the site visit said they hadn't got a TPO, but I would refer you to Regulation fifteen-two of the Town and Country Planning Tree Preservations England Regulations two thousand and twelve, which give automatic protection to these types of trees. There is a shortfall of four parking spaces, that is contrary to policy, probably minor again. But as I said at the end of a similar meeting, not on this issue, at council last year, if we have policies that we're frequently asked to ignore, why bother to have any policies? There are another, a number of other issues that must be of concern, including the placing of bins on the highway in the conservation area every week, as there is no access, as set out in the report, for vehicles to collect the bins. So we are bound to have an eyesore of a number of bins in the conservation area every week. I am still concerned, as I was last time, by the lack of access for fire service vehicles to a large number of residential units. It could be claimed that there's no access now, but I would submit that that is not comparable. Hotel rooms do not have cooking, washing and other electrical equipment in kitchens, which is more likely to catch fire. Let's not forget Grenfell Tower, signed off by the planning inspector responsible for LP one here in Waverley, as existing, longstanding members will know. There are claims of wonderful public transport in the officers' report, and that's quite laughable. There's an hourly bus service during the working day to Guildford and Aldershot, but of course you can't get back because the service stoppage is in the late afternoon. And of course, there's the new two-hourly bus service to Basingstoke, which takes two hours each way. Recent reports seem to indicate the hotel currently has seventy-five percent occupancy, somewhat different to the application that we heard last year. The application is contrary to policy LT2 retention of visitor accommodation. The applicant made reference to much-needed homes in Hazlemere, but again, we are told this is not viable if affordable housing is required as per policy. But is this not the case, that most developers say that, as it's all about profit? We need affordable in Hazlemere, not more luxury, overpriced units. The inspector who considered the application to build in the conservation area, subject to the application in nineteen ninety-nine, dismissed the appeal, stating that land to the rear of Tudor Cottage makes a significant contribution to the setting of the listed buildings and character and appearance of the conservation area. The openness of the car park was considered important. Question is what has changed? When the images appeared on the screen, and I take it that was an artist impressional, however it was created, it just looked ugly. It looked as if it should be in a city centre somewhere, perhaps Salford or somewhere. Looked totally out of keeping to me. And then, again, much has been made about the value, market value and the offers not being enough. Market value, doesn't matter what it says in a book, is what is offered. I could put this glass into an auction and say it's worth a thousand pounds, but if the market only pays tentpence, that's the market value. So I have severe reservations, Chairman. Thank you.
councillor Deere.
Thank you, Chairman. I think there's two areas to think about here, the practical and the technical. The practical side, we can provide sixteen extra residential units in one fell swoop toward the total we have to meet without any extra building. Members are aware how hard it is to build just one or two units quite often, let alone sixteen. It's an open goal for our housing allocation, and that'll allow us to defend more robustly other proposed sites in more rural areas. Addressing some of the points, I can't possibly deal with all of them, because I wasn't making notes that my colleague has just made. There are always compromises to be made in town central developments and refurbishments. Policies are always subject to reasonable interpretation, and I mean, I've never been involved in one that was simply ticked all boxes all the way through. It's always a matter of interpretation. And by the proper implementation of a one-oh-six agreement, we're going to be able to bring about, if this application is approved, the renewal and refurbishment of the main hotel building, which is in dire need of attention. I don't think that's a matter of dispute. It's important to note, I think, for the benefit of the town, that the function room is retained and improved as a facility, and I think that is important. And by doing that refurbishment enforced by the one-oh-six agreement, we will create a positive attraction for the town, somewhere people actively want to visit, actively want to come to, not a hotel simply being the least worst option for travelling salesmen who pass through the town and spend nothing. This will also, as far as I can see, strengthen the employment prospects of those working at the hotel, which have been engraved out for a long period of time. They're the practical matters. Moving on to technical, we've heard from the planning officers that planning policy LT2 has been met. The red book process is a well-rehearsed idea. It's an RIC, a Royal Institution of Chartered Surveyors definition of basically the best open market reasonably obtainable, assuming buying seller and willing purchaser. That's deemed acceptable, that's passed, as far as we're aware. And I've read, you know, as I've read in the report and had confirmed to me by Mr Arthur just now. The other point that the application was last refused was to do with the houses, the additional three houses that were previously proposed at the back. They've now been reduced to mitigate further the effect on neighbours. And as far as I read in the report, the planning, it's now compliant with planning policy, parking policy, I beg your pardon, whereas there was some element of doubt before. If we refuse this, I can't see that we'd be on anything but very shaky grounds. The applications met the refusals for the previous appeal, and I think we might well be regarded as unreasonable if we were to turn it down now with the obvious implications that may have. So for all those reasons, I'm very much in favour of this application. Thank you.
councillor Abini.
Thank you, Chairman. The community at Hazlemere is split over this, there's no doubt about that whatsoever. I have a view we have to do something with it. It can't sit like it is, it is just wrong. However, my main question is my normal one, I'm afraid, and you've heard me say it many times before. We have a town centre. The proposal is to build private houses within that town centre. And I understand there's a viability study to say they cannot afford affordable housing. I'm not an expert on the way they do this viability study. I'm a very practical, normal person, and to my mind, if they're building eighteen, eighteen buildings in this area, and they're not making enough profit to afford at least one, maybe two affordable houses, I am extremely disappointed. The government's aim, quite stated categorically, is to get some in the region of thirty percent affordable housing whenever we have the opportunity. Waverley reflect that. We here want more affordable housing. So what we are doing here is stopping anybody that hasn't the money from living within the town centre, and I think that is wrong. So I kind of understand the viability study, allowing a profit to be made, but not enough for affordable housing. Now, I would ask the officer to perhaps explain further. I must admit, he has tried to explain it to me, but as I said, I haven't an awful lot of understanding on the subject. Perhaps it might help other members if the officer could in fact explain it to us all. Thank you.
Mr Arthur, do you want to respond to that?
I'll give it a go. Just to clarify, I'm not a severe, so here goes. So in terms of the valuation methodology, so the applicant submitted a report by Savills, which is called the Viability Assessment Report, and this took in, it undertook a residual land valuation method, which is a proven method in terms of, councillor Deere's looking at me. This is a residual land valuation method, which is a proven method for testing the viability in relation to affordable housing viability on site. And this takes into account elements such as the build value of the proposed private residential and other uses, plus the build value of affordable housing, which is the gross domestic, gross DDB, yeah? Development value, that one, minus the build cost, the finance cost and other section one-oh-six costs, such as sales values, fees, developers' profit, et cetera, which equates to the residual land value. And the residual land value is then compared to a site value benchmark. If the residual land value is lower or not sufficiently higher than the benchmark, then the project is not technically viable. And that's what has happened in this case, that the residual land value is, as one would expect it to be, high for an existing building and existing use. It's not a greenfield site, and that's where very often, within this context, developments wise, wise viable to produce, all private housing don't reduce affordable housing, and basically that, this has arisen. So this report in itself, the Savills report, we asked Alton to undertake an independent assessment of it, which they duly did. They questioned some of the values, including the identified residual land value from the Savills report, and identified a much lower one. And even then, they concluded that affordable housing on the site or a package of planning gain benefits weren't possible, weren't viable. So from a planning perspective, have we assessed, I mean, have we assessed the planning considerations in a robust way? And I, as the officer who has assessed it, I'm satisfied and confident that it has in this particular instance.
councillor Deere, you want to say?
Just very briefly, Chairman, thank you. I mean, I do understand these processes because it's, you know, basically what I do for a living. I mean, I think we have to take at face value the fact that the planning officers have gone through this process and have come to the conclusions that they've come to. I have to say that, having been through this process myself in other situations, the feasibility of the whole project will have been adversely affected by the length of time it's taken to get to this point, because there is a, there's a, there's a holding cost that an owner of a site has to deal with, during which time he has to pay interest on whatever situation either, you know, he's in at the time. And that will, the time delay that this whole process has taken will adversely affect the feasibility of its own right. Now, I don't think that's been taken into account, probably in the figures, but as I say, I think we have to accept at face value that planning officers have done due diligence with independent advisers and come to the conclusions that they've come to. Thank you.
councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. The vice-chairman said that he wasn't an expert, and neither am I. But that is why, in my view, we have officers. They are the experts in what they have. And now we've got an even greater expert sitting on my left ear, which has given me even more encouragement. And whilst I understand the owner of the Tudor Cottage, I have a listed building myself in Chillingfold, and I do understand that, but I don't believe if it went to appeal again, that it would be refused on those grounds that it adversely affected Tudor Cottage. They are too small, quite. It would be lovely if they weren't there at all, and it was just the extension to the Georgian was converted into residential. That would be the perfect scenario, but we don't live in a perfect world. So I am satisfied that the officers have done everything that they have been asked to do, and therefore I will concur with them on this thing. And of course, we did say there might be some loss of hotel units. Well, I was on the committee that agreed to, I think it was sixty extra dwellings at the Lyth Hill, and again, that was very contentious. People didn't want to spoil that listed building, and I think on that night I said, I think at the time, you know, if I'd come by a horse and slept on a hay bale, then the Lyth Hill would have remained as it was, but, you know, we move on in this world. So I will be supporting the officers. Thank you.
Very much. I would point out, I'd just like to re-emphasise, the officers did say that the land value was in fact revalued and downwards actually, so that's an important point to note anyway. Any other councillor which should speak? Well, councillor Davidson first, please.
I'm very much in support of what councillor Knowles has pointed out. In fact, he said pretty much what I had noted down prior to this meeting. So I very, I agree with him that I would probably be unsupportive of this particular application. And I'd also like to note the fact that if one looks at the neighbourhood plan, or the Hazlemere vision, which is in the process of being consulted upon as a neighbourhood plan, the drive there is to support an expanding visitor economy, and taking away one of the key amenities in the town centre, which would support that economy, strikes me as being counter to what we in the town would like to see.
Does any other councillor which should speak? Well, councillor?
Do you want to go first? All right, okay. Didn't put our hands together, did we? Right, yes. I'll just make some brief points on this one. Everyone's spoken in some length about it. First of all, we have a block of flats and two houses will be produced. That gives eighteen new units for Hazlemere. That's important. And I'm happy about the size of the flats. In fact, I'd be happy if they're all one or two bedrooms. I'm not worried about the market share at all. That's, that's in city centres, that's town centres, that's quite fine. But there are downsides, and there's no social housing. That's worrying. And as councillor Knowles says, there are these accumulation of minor environmental points. I mean, that's something you have to think about as well. If we move to the main point of the hotel, and this is a hotel which has a series of failures over many years, I mean, I remember discussing this twenty-odd years ago in Southern Planning, it goes on and on and on. On the other hand, a twelve-bedroom size is quite small. It's a binary choice of a big hotel or a small hotel. Awkward one. It's a difficult decision, but overall, I will support the scheme.
Adam.
Thank you, yes. I mean, the owners of this hotel now are, as it said recently, the, the number of visitors in it has increased, so over the last few months, it's done quite well. Of course, when this valuation of this place was done, was probably at the point when there was the most confusion in the country over exit and everything else, so a lot of activities were reduced. I mean, I don't understand why the owners of the hotel can't actually do the upgrades that they want to do to the hotel building themselves. I mean, all they need to do surely is to find additional funds and do it properly. I mean, all they need to do surely is to find additional funds and do it properly, which is indeed what Lyth Hill hoteliers have done. I mean, as far as these flats are concerned, I think that, again, I think councillor Knowles' fact about the lack of fire access and ambulance access and everything is quite significant, especially if you're expecting, you know, more elderly people to buy these flats. The two houses at the back, well, I mean, they, just to say, occupy car parking space. So if you're trying to build up a business with more visitors and more activities in the hotel, last thing you want to do is actually reduce the number of car parking spaces. I just think it doesn't really change very much from the last refusal. It seemed to me that it's just, again, a fudge.
Councillor Keane, then councillor Shute, and then I'll give you the...
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I have listened to all the comments that are made. And the one comment that I think has been overlooked to a degree is the fact that we have got a new visitor centre in Hazlemere. And there is huge talk about bringing lots of people in. In fact, the hotel owner alluded to that, that, you know, we're bringing people into Hazlemere all the time, and how good that is. But if you're bringing people into Hazlemere and they're wanting to stay in Hazlemere, a twelve-bedroom hotel is not going to suffice, I'm afraid. And like councillor Adams, I can't understand why the owners do not upgrade this hotel and make it something to be visited by people. It is a sad building. I don't think there's been very much work done on it for years and years. And I think, you know, they maybe should be thinking along those lines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councillor Knowles has taken virtually all the points I wished to raise earlier on, one by one. The car park surely is not a Brownfield site. I don't quite see that. I don't see the need for the two cottages, substantial cottages there. I look at the sequence of what's going to happen. Is the house, houses going to be built, the flats first, and then the hotel refurbished? We don't know that. We don't know the sequence. And having seen other schemes, particularly one in Farnham, where that didn't quite happen, I seem to remember a trust fund being set up in Mauritius as well. That's by the by. Just mentioning the number of trees that are likely to be lost, that's very sad. Councillor Knowles mentioned the balconies. Well, a two- or three-bedroom flat with two balconies to make it more attractive. Sorry, I don't see that one at all. I look at the refuse collection. It says eleven two-hundred-and-forty-litre wheelie bins. Sorry, there are sixteen flats and two houses. That's eighteen. So where are they going to go? Outside Tudor Cottage, I suspect. That's a real worry, that that number isn't correct, because everyone's going to have their own wheelie bin, aren't they? I can't see how the construction of the Suds tank is going to allow access to Tudor Cottage, which has a right of way to their parking area. All these things are unseen at the moment. We don't know exactly what's going to happen and when. There should be a very clear path of the whole process right the way through. To me, the opinion that's identified the less than substantial harm to the significant heritage assets is an opinion. It's not written in stone. And in my opinion, it has a great effect on the grade-two listed building on either side. I do have great difficulty, great to find that. We know that the hotel is tired, needs a great deal of tender loving care, at considerable cost, because it's a grade-two listed building in the conservation area. So I have great concerns over the extent of the development. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Now, councillor Deere?
Thank you, Chairman. Having listened to my colleagues, I have to say, I think we're in danger of wandering off onto subjects that have absolutely nothing to do with planning. We're not in a position to assess any viabilities of hotels in any detail, other than to reflect on councillor Nicholson's comment that this is a, this hotel has been the subject of a serial failures. The existing hotel can produce about fifteen-and-a-half thousand room nights a year, which, with the best, I love Hazlemere as much as the next man, but I really think that's unlikely to be something that is going to be fully taken up. What's proposed is about four-and-a-half thousand room nights a year, in what an enforceable 106 agreement will make a spectacularly, one would hope, attractive facility for the town, a reason for people positively to visit the town. There are always compromises, as I said in the previous remarks I made. I don't have, I am happy to go along with the officer's recommendation in pretty much every detail. Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Chairman. Just one point. The neighbour has, in my view, quite rightly raised the accessway. If, and I say if, this is passed, is there any possibility of putting some sort of informative on our recommendations, conditions, so that they do their best to keep his accessway clear, so that he can come and go? We've all said and we all agree, there's very little parking space around the area, and I'd hate him to be stopped using that driveway, if indeed construction traffic is such an extent that he can't get in.
Mr. Arthur, do you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, an informant can be asked to outline that they have to enter into agreement in order to secure that access. It's important to note that the access is a civil matter, not a planning matter, and it shouldn't be taken into account in the determination of this application.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other others want to speak? Okay, we'll move to the recommendation. That's subject to the applicant entering into an appropriate legal agreement within six months of the date of the committee resolution to grant planning permission to secure the provision of and contributions towards Suds and open space management, stroke maintenance, and subject to conditions one to thirty-two, and all informants' one to sixteen permission be granted. Now, the electronic system is working now, so we should use that system, okay? Those in favour, green. Those against, red. And she has standing blue. So isn't it?
Have you got your card in? Can you check your cards right in?
Is everybody else who's working? Right, okay. Well, thank you. Right, please go please.
There's two people. So can people...
On our agenda for tonight, and I do appreciate your perseverance, is in fact, an application which is not subject to public speaking, which is item B1, WA 20191492, Long Dean House, Hedgehog Lane, Hazlemere. The proposal is part approval of reserve matters, appearance, layout and scale, following the outline approval of WA 20190337 for the construction of two dwellings in relation to area B only. And the officer is all agreeing. Can you please present?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, members. If I could just draw your attention to one of the key points in the update sheet that you would have received yesterday, that just pointed out an amendment to the report, removing reference to entrance gates. That was removed from the proposal as part of the recent set of amended drawings. So just to clarify that. In addition, there's just one further update to condition eleven, as set out in the update sheet that you will have received, just changing that to a prior to first occupation condition rather than a pre-commencement condition. Thank you. The application site is located to the west of Hedgehog Lane, with the, oh, sorry, with the access road off Hedgehog Lane shown here on the location plan. For the purposes of recent planning applications, the Long Dean House site has been subdivided into areas A, B, C and D. That's area A, the field up here, with area B, which is the subject of this application here. It's area C, which contains Long Dean House itself. Area D, an area with some existing glass houses. So the current application relates to area B only, located to the north-west of Long Dean House. And the application seeks part approval of reserved matters following outline approval. And the outline approval was granted for two dwellings within area B, under a hybrid application, which also granted outline consent for one dwelling within area D, and full permission for the conversion of Long Dean House into one dwelling. The reserved matters which form the current application are the layout, scale and appearance. The aerial view shows the entire Long Dean House site here, the access road shown here, the main Long Dean House building, with the application site, and it's area B to the north-west here. The application site currently comprises two semi-detached cottages, which can be seen here. These two photos show Long Dean House, with the top photo showing the view of Long Dean House as you're entering the site, with this photo here showing just the front elevation of Long Dean House. The existing site plan of area B is shown here, with the two existing semi-detached cottages. A parking area is shown here, which currently serves the existing office use of Long Dean House. The site photos of the application site, area B, show the existing cottages in relation to Long Dean House. Here, you can see the change in land levels, with the site sloping downwards slightly from Long Dean House. And so the application site is on a slightly lower level than the main building, as can be seen here in both of these photos. Photograph A here shows the existing parking area, which is to be returned to lawn as part of the proposal. And photograph B shows the garden areas currently serving the existing cottages, which will form the gardens for the proposed dwellings. The photographs here show the existing semi-detached cottages. Photograph A showing the front and photograph B showing the rear. As you can see, the design of the existing cottages features red brick and pebble dash at first floor level. So the proposed layout is shown in this plan, with the two detached dwellings and each served by a detached garage. This master plan drawing shows the proposed dwellings in relation to Long Dean House itself. Unit A here is approximately twenty metres from the main Long Dean House building. This slide shows the front and rear elevations of unit A. You can see a traditional Surrey vernacular style is proposed, with gables breaking up the roof form, tile hanging at first floor level, and red brick at ground floor level. The side elevations of unit A are shown here. This slide shows the floor plans and roof plan. So two five-bedroom dwellings are proposed, with a number of bedrooms shown here. The front and rear elevation of unit B are shown in this slide. And as you can see, a slightly different design is proposed to the front elevation of unit B, with the lower eaves height on the front elevation. This slide shows the side elevations for unit B. And then we've got the ground floor, first floor and roof plan for unit B. The proposed garage design, which would be identical for both of the dwellings, is shown here. A hipped roof design is proposed. The block plan here shows the position of the garages in relation to the dwellings. The matter that we, officers consider the main matters for consideration of members this evening to be the impact on landscape character, design and impact on visual amenity, and the impact on residential amenity. And officers have assessed the proposal and are recommending approval of the application. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Well, since there's not so much public speaking, does councillor which comment? And then councillor which speak? Yes, councillor?
Thank you, Chairman. Looking at the height and all the rest of it, yes, it's on the hillside, and they do seem to come below the existing building. However, my problem is with the building material. I accept that the building that is there is shingle and red. That doesn't mean to say surely that the developers should have some sort of idea to blend in better with the existing amenity around it. Now, this is an opportunity. What I would like to see is in fact that we look at those construction materials again, and put better construction materials more in keeping with the surrounding houses, and not just simply replace something with something else simply because it is there. So I myself would like this changed material for the construction. Thank you.
Constable Deere?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Well, like you, I was on the site visit last week, and I agree to a great degree with what councillor Robini said about the material, because the large Long Dean House is of a completely different build to what is proposed. After the site meeting, and I've never noticed this before, I went down to Tesco's. And as I drove in, there on the hill opposite was Long Dean House. And you can see the cottages, although they're smaller. So these two, if they're in red brick, are going to stand out like a car bunker on that hillside. And you can see Long Dean House quite clearly, and they are then in the way of it, on the way of it, and be completely different. So I'm not saying that the building of these is wrong, but if we are looking at the visual amenity here, I was surprised how far away I was to see it all very clearly. And I think we should be looking at the material used.
Very much. Councillor Deere?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I'm sorry, we're considering this at all tonight. We, some of the members, a good number of the members were asked to express an informal opinion at the end of last year as to the layout, scale and appearance of these houses. opinion at the end of last year as to the layout, scale and appearance of these houses. We're clearly not discussing the principle of them, that's history. We made some observations along the line of that councillor Knowles and councillor Robini have made, and it was very obvious from the recent site visit that Long Dean House is a sort of sandstone-faced, slightly weird little structure, a large structure actually, with all sorts of idiosyncratic architectural cues, and what we're faced with here is a couple of examples lifted out of the book of Surrey vernacular, absolutely no relationship with the building at all. I suspect had the applicant been made aware of that sooner, we may have been able to have a more constructive conversation this evening than we have now. I don't know what to do about this, it seems regrettable to refuse something like this when a matter could be changed, I suspect, I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth, but I could, you know, could be changed relatively easily. So, I mean, I genuinely don't know what to do about this. I don't know if officers might be able to provide some guidance, but I'm in, on the basis of what's been said so far, I'm entirely agreement with councillor Robini and councillor Knowles about the scales, the layout and scale are fine as far as I'm concerned, the external appearance is not.
Councillor Nicholson?
Well, this is quite interesting, and I think the answer to this must be a deferment. I think we should look at this again and see what sort of materials can be used.
Thanks, Chairman. I was just wondering whether we don't have to defer it, whether we can condition the outside cladding of this building.
Cladding like Coronation Street?
Well, no. So it's supposed to be red brick, a sandstone, cots or stony?
I shall take the advice of Mr. Alwyn, see what he says.
Given the plans in front of us, we won't be able to condition alternative materials. However, it would be in members' power if they were wishing to support this, but subject to alternative materials, to defer the applications either for, to come back to another committee, or to approve subject to amended materials being submitted and approved in negotiation, in consultation with the chair, and the ward members, which would enable us not to have to come back to committee, but it would enable us to talk to the agent. Obviously, if the agents came back and said they weren't prepared to, then we would just bring it back to the next available committee, but that is a way, rather than coming back to a committee, I believe that would be acceptable. I just want to check with Lewis that he's happy with that approach. So it'd be basically delegating approval to the head of planning in consultation with the chair and ward members to agree the scheme subject to suitable, acceptable materials.
Councillor Deere?
Yeah, that seems like a constructive suggestion, although I would like to say that it's not simply a matter of changing the external, the facing materials, I think there are, you know, there's a redesign here, and as I say, as far as I'm concerned, the layout and the scale are acceptable, but there are, as I say, all sorts of sort of interesting design cues that Long Dean House could offer, that maybe one or two could be incorporated in this, to create some sort of relationship between one of the town's striking buildings and two new ones that are to be built nearby. So it's not simply the external facing materials, there's a design element of this, but if what you're, if both of those elements, if I understood what other councillors have said, if both of those can be incorporated into the process that Zach's described, then I think we, well, certainly from my point of view, that would seem to be solved the problem.
Councillor Nicholson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Yeah, I withdraw my suggestive deferment, I do like your suggestion about further discussion with ward members, I think that's a more efficient and sensible way to go, so I would be very happy to go down that route.
I take it then you propose that motion, would you, councillor Nicholson?
Well, I would, I asked for it to be third, I now withdraw that.
I need a second for that motion.
Delegating.
Delegated, yes. Can we just clarify?
I agree with Zach's advice, insofar as members could choose to make a resolution subject to revised plans being submitted, insofar as they relate to materials only, I think that's sufficiently clear and unambiguous for that to happen. I think if we stray into issues relating to design, I would be cautious about taking the same approach, because I think the perimeters of what we're looking at, it becomes less clear in that scenario, I think a deferral would be the better option.
Keane, you want to speak?
Thank you, Chairman. Well, my personal view is that, you know, in view of the councillors' reservations, that I would propose a deferment.
So you wish to propose a deferment, you need a second, councillor Keane?
Oh, I'll second it, definitely.
So I'm being, I hope I'm not being dim, is the deferral simply in relation to a revision of the external materials, or is it in relation to the design? Because I have problems with both, and if we don't deal with both, I'm inclined to suggest a refusal.
Sorry, if I can just clarify, so the two, well, there are three options, one is to approve the scheme as it currently stands, but obviously the mood of the members, the committee is not to do that. The second is to defer the application for us to negotiate design and materials. The third one is if members' concern was only relating to the materials, we believe you could delegate authority to myself as head of planning in consultation with the chairman of the committee and the local ward members to agree that. So effectively, you'll be giving away your rights to send the application, but on the basis that we would be negotiating suitable materials. So I believe those are the three options available to you, and we do have a proposal and a second for the, wait, our fourth option, sorry, is to refuse, obviously, sorry, yeah, that goes without saying, apologies, members, yeah. So you do have a proposal and a second.
Councillor Keane?
It was the designer materials, Chairman.
So it's a deferral, yes. Councillor Robini?
Yes, can I just make sure through the officers that we have time to defer? I know there are time limits on some applications, I'd hate to run out of time. Is there a time limit on this one?
Sorry, I think the point is, the applicants could appeal against non-determination, should the time limits be exceeded, but given that the mood of members is to approve subject to, you know, the scale etcetera is not a question, it's more detailed design materials, we would hope that the applicants would see that as preferable, you know, to come back with the scheme, rather than appealing against non-determination, but that is even within their gift, it's not for us to determine.
Councillor Davidson?
Thank you, Chairman. I think we're rather missing what councillor Deere is alluding to, which is that if we look at the material, we should also be looking at the design, because the two of them go hand in hand. So on that basis, I would suggest that a non-approval would be in order for the applicant to go back and relook at his design, and the use of material which would go with that design.
Sorry, sorry for any confusion, I think that was what councillor Keane was suggesting, and councillor James has seconded that, it was to defer, to go back, for officers to go back to the applicants and to negotiate amendments to the design and materials. Obviously, it's still open to, if that's voted on, and members feel, no, it should be refused, that's a matter for members to vote on.
I would have thought it would be cleaner just to refuse and get him to go back again.
As I said, it's a matter for you to vote, as you see fit, councillor.
The motion on the table to defer, so I think we have to vote on that, please. So those in favour of defer? No, no, no.
Oh, electronic.
Electronically, please. It is working, so, yeah. Those who are very press the green button, if you're not against deferment, press the red button, if you don't know what to do, I hear saying, press the blue button.
Okay, so deferral. We've got nine to deferral and one abstention.
Okay, well, I think it's carried, isn't it? Thank you very much, okay.